Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Good Harbor City Council's study session of third day April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, time is three oh two P M., and I will do a full call. Councilmember Look, here. Councilmember Sourceset is excused. Councilmember Rotberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lycans.
Here.
Member Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Great. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to our staff that are here. We'll be introducing them throughout the meeting. Thank you to our audience watching here and online. Before we go into our first discussion item, I wanted to let council know kind of slide of the new seating change, in case you're wondering. It's been hard for me to see when you guys raise your hands, especially if you're like around a corner or sitting on the same side of the table. So I asked that I be at the head of the table with Katrina and some staff so that we can see when council are raising their hands. And so that's why we have you guys going down on these sides and then staff and us this way. So hope that works for you all. It sure will work better for us. And then we have a lot to get through in this short two hours. So I'll ask that council raise their hands again when they would like to ask a question. And if you could just fold questions, I'll leave it up to staff whether they want questions to be in the during the presentation or after. Because they know what their presentations are better than I do. And if they would rather not be interrupted till the end, I'll let them tell you that as we go along. Just to make sure we can get through all of these and not feel like we're rushed. So before we go into, and then actually I'll turn over to Katrina for a moment to talk to us about future study sessions.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I know your time is very valuable. And we talked at the end of your last study session about how much great work the staff is doing that will need to come to council for work session. And so we have since talked with two of the members of the council who will not be able to be here from two to three every Thursday. And so there's two options. Wanted to get quick feedback. And if it can't be quick, that's fine. You can you can email me, but we can have the meetings go from three to five thirty and have staff shift their their days to be here a little bit later, which would mean you'd only be here twice outside of Mondays. Or there's the option of adding a third work session on an off Thursday from two, sorry, three to five. But we felt that that was fair because councilmembers Lycans and Sourceset could not be here at two o'clock.
You're asking I put island three to five thirty, for some reason.
Okay.
Preference. Yeah, no preference. I'm gonna do this three to five thirty.
Does three to five thirty give staff the amount of time that you guys need? That's only an extra half an hour.
I think we can try it. I think another thing, and I apologize that I was late, that the mayor were trying to run the meetings maybe a little bit more expeditiously. And so we'd like to try those combined with the extra half an hour and see if we can fit all of it into that time. And if not, if that doesn't work, we can always switch up.
Yeah. And so it would be a standing third work session each month. So an extra work session each month, which we thought maybe wouldn't. We wouldn't want to try that first. We can try these other things first. So if that's okay with you all, we'll just shift to that for now. I'm seeing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Can you talk to salary commission about that?
Well, we sure could, Lee. If you really wanted to. Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. And then before we go into the first discussion item, I also want to acknowledge our parks manager Jennifer Howes. She has some input she'd like to gather from council and information to give you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so as you know, we are working with the Great Peninsula Conservancy to hopefully get conservation futures money to acquire a phase four conservation property north of the ones that we have already acquired. So the GPC has asked it, we would be interested in applying for the Lou Windsor Memorial Environmental Grant run through the Key Peninsula Harbor Island watershed is the maximum award amount is twenty-five hundred dollars. So it's not a huge grant, but wanted to run it by you to see if we have permission to go for it. There aren't, you know, if we don't end up acquiring the property, we would probably have to decline it. But you know, as we are working on other funding sources and appraisals and all of that, it's due tomorrow. But so we, I was hoping to get affirmation if you'd like us to pursue that or not.
Is that grant to be used only for acquisition of new property?
No, there are various various things it could be used for, but that's.
Can we in our grant application say acquisition or enhancement of an existing adjacent property? Maybe that would help with the push control expense.
Um, well, it was, it is shown at the North Creek Salmon Heritage Site Phase Four. We could alter it.
I just did a suggestion.
Are we actually administer that grant? So I can answer any questions that you had.
Wow, that's good.
You would have to submit it for one or the other.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Henderson, do you have a question?
Just question about timeframe. The grants due tomorrow. How long would it be? Because it sounds like it probably would take a while for the phase four acquisition if that happens. I mean, if we get the grant in, say, six months and it takes two years.
The project has to be completed by June first of the following year. So.
So we think we have a shot at getting that property by June first?
Well, so.
Okay.
So there's a lot of moving pieces.
Yeah.
But yeah. Again, this is Great Peninsula Conservancy staff that is conducting this working conjunction with Jennifer. And so they're really a great partner in this. It's taken it's reduced our staff time and they're going to be applying for the conservation futures money to for the remainder of the of the sale price. And so this would be twenty-five hundred dollars that GPC wouldn't have to push put into that. So I think it would be a great thing to apply for this.
And that's a good point. Don't worry.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for bringing it. Thank you, Jennifer, for your work on this. Thanks, council. Okay, we will go right into our first item, which is our community center presentation. Welcome Gary Parker and Joe Hillier. Thanks for being here. I'll let you guys just take the floor and you'll have, well, thirty minutes total. Yes, presentation and questions time watch. Three ten, okay.
I'm seeing if I can go on the full screen while I'm doing.
I think you can.
I gotta stand because I was taught to stand when I talk.
Whatever you want to do.
Say, Mayor, thank you. Thank you. I've never done a study session before, so you might have to guide me a little bit. But what I'm advised to do is that thirty minutes is a short time for this topic. Give an overview. We've got some follow-up information for many of the one-on-one conversations that we've had, right? I'll share that with you today. And then the discussion is up to you guys. Okay. Just to remind you what the building is, we've been talking about. It's the T-thirths to the left on that picture. It's on sound view. So you guys all remember that and all that kind of thing. What we want to build, the finished and the unfinished stage, you remember, from our conversations. And for those who haven't seen it, it's kind of a full-fledged community center where, you know, we have a lot of senior activities, but we can also integrate youth and disabilities and veterans and so on and so forth. The unfinished space is where the pickleball courts are at and those kinds of things. And then we have the indoor tech pieces. Okay, so that's the property that we've been discussing. So kind of a summary, right? Let's start at the beginning, right? This is the city's twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three strategic plan. And on that plan, it's to provide a place for the seniors. Right? So we tried to get together and come up with what we think is a robust, timely, fiscally responsible option that we can do, that we can do quickly. Key deliverables for this was it had to be multipurpose, had to be the home of the seniors, support youth and senior interaction, and must support civic organizations. It must provide meeting and banquet space that's needed in this town. It must be centrally located and accessible. It must be seen as a resource to the community. It must support city outreach initiatives. And it must be effective and scalable. Right? The proposal is thirteen thousand square feet. It's located at five seven five Soundview Drive. Seven thousand square feet is finished. Six thousand square feet is unfinished. We presented a vision that included all the required comforts, capabilities, and bigger abilities of a modern community center. We excuse me, I'm a little tired of catering all day. So excuse me, I guess I, we discussed potential revenue and generation opportunities and high level costs back when we had our one-on-ones. We discussed possible funding sources. We've acknowledged the urgency to get a lease done if we want to do this building because it is sitting on the market today. In our view, the only thing that's really left is to for this council's inside, if this proposal meets the expectations of the line item that you have in your strategic plan. Okay? Any questions so far? Okay. Now, we go forward. This is some of the follow-up from different discussions that we've had. What do we need to actually get into the building? When I've talked to you guys before, we were so really tack or really kind of strategic. And so we had to get really tactical. So if I wanted to go tomorrow and sign this lease, this is what twenty twenty-three looks like, right? I'd have to go way on the twenty-four thousand down and in the first month's rent. Okay, if we get that lease, we would say do it by May first. May, June, and July would be be gratis, right? It's time for us to ramp the building, right? And stuff like that. Landlords don't charge for that. And then we would kick in on our normal rent cycle, of which I've got listed there. Terms of the lease, again, thirteen thousand square feet, it's a seven-year term. When we actually go to lease, what you'll see is multiple seven-year terms because you just don't, you just don't cut off with one. You go ahead and build in your option, right? Because you never know what the economy's going to do. It's sixteen dollars a square foot plus four percent year over year, right? As we go through this, the deposit is twenty-four plus one month's rent. And the landlord has offered us fifty thousand back once we get open for tenant improvements. Other things that Joe and I need, if we got, if we signed this lease and got started, is we would need to really hire our director immediately. Because we're pretty tired, you know, after years worth of effort of narrowing this thing down, right? We need to get our utilities, insurance, and janitorial pieces put together. Signage is still a little bit of a mystery. You can be a little, or it can be a lot depending on what is right, what fits spec, these kinds of things, right? So I didn't really know how to do much more than that. So I got that's placeholder. Building refresh, this is the paint schemes, the whether we've removed the carpet, put down hard floor, that kind of thing. But the bigger part of that is we know we got some lights. We got to move, we have some low-hanging lights that are in that unfinished space and we need to move them back up because of the pickleball courts and stuff that we want to put in there. But that's what we would need. We're looking at about two hundred K just to get into the building and operate for the year. Okay. If we go further, things that we need to do to get ready to open, these were that project list that were all in red on the picture. We want to put that commissary kitchen in. We want to get the salon put in. We have the stage area. That's the A V systems for presentation and so forth. I don't need to read them all to you, right? Because you guys have all seen them close. We will say that we've had some good opportunity, right? If you notice, the TV room is now down to a thousand. And that was because one of the living facilities here in town found out we were doing this and they've already donated all the furniture for it. So we've got, we've got a locker just full of, full of couches and chairs and what have you that you that you need. And that breakfast area right outside the kitchen. But the other stuff adds up to roughly one hundred and thirty-two thousand that we need to do if we want to get everything put together. Questions so far? I bring this up just because, Council, you guys had these questions, right? So we wanted to provide those answers. Okay. Many of the, much of the conversation was about performance, right? So what we did, and there's a spreadsheet I have in the background, but I don't think I can share it in this meeting. So but I do have it. I can offer it to you. But this is the summary of it. So Leo, I think it's you and I that were talking about this. And Roger, I think you do as well. If you take the contract or the L O I and you apply that lease and you go across the seven years, that's your monthly, that's your monthly basic expense for this building. Okay. If you come back on the other side of it and you go, you look at all the rentable space when seniors are not present in the in the center, right? We've got a lot of revenue generating power. And in fact, the numbers are a little bit light because when I last night at one, when I did this, I forgot all about the classroom, right? So there's another revenue generator that's in this building that I don't have accounted for with the blue numbers right now. So it'd be a little bit higher than that. These are all monthly averages and predictions, but this is kind of the performer that I think you wanted to see this. And I'm happy to share the spreadsheet with you guys if you want.
I also wanted to see where for the revenues coming.
Yeah, that's basically we lease pickleball courts. We have meeting space, both finished and unfinished. We have the banquets that we bring in on weekends. And then, like I said, there's the classroom that would come in. And remember, we have multiples of those things. So we have a base and then we multiply it by how many of what we add is. And in fact, we're learning so much about the value of pickleball courts, we might actually include a third one in there because as you can rent those by the hour, being indoors, I think that would be very popular in this town. And all this helps, you know, continue. What we want to do is we want to get this this place self-sufficient. We want to get it started, but we don't want it to be a constant draw on the community, right? We want it to get self-sufficient, up and running, and be able to support itself. It would be our goal.
One of the things that we talked about in our one-on-one was the incorporating youth into it more, which would mean that that would also be into the evenings. So are you with your revenues, are you assuming that any youth who use it in the evening are renting it?
Yeah, we can do that. We can bring in performing arts with seniors. We can bring in R F T C. And we talked to Commander Hood about that a little bit, right? About how those interactions become. To get detail on that question, that's where I would really need the director, you know, hired and have a strategic discussion about all the different integration paths we could have.
I guess what I'm hearing you say, though, is that the seniors are going to use it during the day and there's not a lot of revenue during the day. But then when youth come in, they're going to pay for it. I have a problem with that. If we're trying to also build programs as a city, if we're trying to build programs for youth as well as for seniors.
So again, any specific programs can be whatever we want it to be.
I think the youth are going to pay for it somehow.
Thank you. So this forty-six thousand five hundred fifty-one, is that money that's being spent in the community now by different groups? I mean, where do you get this money from?
When we bench for what we can lease different spaces or meetings for this kind of thing, we bench against the come up. And it comes up with an hourly rate, going rate, if you will. And so, so like I said, if we have, if we have a club A in the morning, right, to do their meeting before seniors arrive, right, that'd be hundred and fifty dollars a day or something like that. So I just take those simple numbers and then multiply them out and then to get a, to get a big master number, what the, what could be generated? And then I de-rate it because I know we're not going to be perfect.
So that could be generated, but is that being spent in our community today?
I believe it is. And when you look at the experiences I have, when you look at yacht club or Ocean Spy or different places where people are going, you know, there's just a pent-up demand for this.
Thank you.
So I'm interested, also not to not to leave you hanging on to your question, because like I said, things can be very variable depending on what we need it to do. That's why it's so convertible, right? Yeah. If I got, if I got a business coming in that wants to run a, you know, business meeting on an offset, of course, we're going to charge a waiting, right? But if we want to do, do something on behalf of the city, right, you will. Obviously, we, we figure out what that costs and we just go forward with it, right? That's the way I view it.
I'm assuming you'd be able to serve wine or at home.
Yes.
So you could do things for wine reasons and whatnot.
Remember, I think it's mandatory. One of the most popular things in the community is to do wine tasting.
Yeah, yeah.
Finding a place to do that.
Special.
Have you thought about a full-time or maybe part-time person that does nothing but fundraising to do that, you know, auctions and communities for setting up legacy accounts, that kind of thing?
Absolutely.
That's what you, in my opinion, is a a source of income that's.
Absolutely. When you, when you remember, we, you know, as we worked with Robin over the county, you know, she's tying us into the grant programs and stuff. So yeah, I didn't put it on here, but it's assumed that there's going to be a body in charge of that, right? It just keeps us, keeps us going constantly. And by the way, I didn't, those are additional dollars to what I think we can earn just straight out, right?
I look at other nonprofits in town that are very, this is a very generous town. And I look at other nonprofits in town that have done, offered a job of placing funds and building, operating revenues.
Yeah. It's a pretty standard model, I think. Any more questions on this line? Come on, do it on time. Go forward. So this is just a summary. I just add everything up. One of the things I do want to point out, because I told you about the fifty thousand and tenant improvement that would come back. To date, we are already up to twenty-one five in donations from the community. And as we've gone around and just communicated, there are those who have, have just donated on the spot. Okay, so you consider that, plus we've probably got, I'll guess, about thirty grand where the furniture's sitting in storage right now. It's being well-received as we go around to the different clubs and community areas to present this. So what I'm trying to do is close that gap. Any questions?
Senator, could you, Gary, could you talk about, I know that Ken Met Parks is doing some visioning and that kind of thing on senior center. Have you guys talked with Ken Met and how, where is that conversation and that? I don't know.
So this has been presented to the architect firm that's running the steering committees for both Aquatic and Zier, right? They're very impressed. I feel like that was well received. And then I think the way to describe our interface with them right now is due diligence is taking place. We're looking at those properties that are openly looking at this option as well. And it will, it will take its time, but you know, eventually get to a study session just like we are.
Okay. Just to, Mary, I think that this proposal is immediate. It can be in operation in a matter of months. Whereas Ken Met is, that will take, we all know how long that kind of thing takes, years, years. So this would operate until we fold it into or not, depending upon what happens in the timeframe. But this is immediate. That's what I like about it.
Yeah, thank you. So I did listen to Ally Useit this morning. And so I think she said that her, not Peninsula Gardens, but the facility on Reed Road would be operational in twenty twenty-four, both phase one and phase two. Is that is, is phase two? Just indoor courts? Is there any space for the seniors in phase two of that building? Does anyone know?
Mr. Grimmer, you want to cover that one? From what I've seen on the blueprints, it's all.
All sports.
It's all sports. But, but it's capable of other things. I just don't know to the extent, right? I think they have a there's about roughly two thousand feet of usable space in the CRC. That's, you know, you can use, it's open space to use, use for whatever. There's a few meeting rooms that, the other, the support facility is all open with just a couple of at the control entry point, there's a couple of rooms there or just administration.
The mayor and I were able to meet with Steve Nixon and Ally Useit earlier this, this week. I can't even remember. About a number of things. And the, as I understand it, the phase two of the community recreation center has not been totally programmed out yet. So it's still flexible in terms of what is going to occur there. And there could be things open for community.
And does that mean seniors?
It could mean seniors. They're undertaking a growth plan update right now. And so you, not to plug, but you can take their survey before Saturday for their growth plan. But if right now they're working similarly to the city, how we prioritize our parks means that the district is doing that as well. And so depending on where seniors rank in that, it may prioritize there. But as we understand it, it's not a for sure thing at this point, but it could happen. Thank you.
This work, please, of that is, did you say two thousand?
Yeah.
And this is thirteen thousand. This and two thousand, once you run into the same kind of things happening now, it's, you get something set up and then you're going to have something else happen this afternoon. So that's got to be taken down. And so it'd be a similar situation in this. It's a true.
Exactly. And so just to follow up on Jenny, what you also heard Ally say is more, it's a similar model to us for the CRC building. You know, she said several times, the lobby and stuff, when after hours, right, they're, they're going into a model like that as well, where they lease that space for whatever needs to happen in the evening, clubs and what have you.
So that could be competition with it.
Could be, but I, my judgment is the pent-up demand in this town for this stuff is huge, right? And I don't think we, I don't think that even this center's going to.
I think a compliment, because one or the other, we're maxed out on space. The next one, we pick up the phone and call the other, mess with them, maybe work together.
Right.
Compliment each other, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? What else I have here? Oh, so just the update over the status and direction. You can see my little today with a happy face. We're in our, in our study session with you guys. Where, as I just said, within that, we're going, we're continuing the conversation and helping with due diligence there. We have talked to Pierce County and Robin. She's very excited about this plan. She plans to try to fold us into her budget cycle next year. But more importantly, she's working very hard right now to start us on the grant programs and things like that that we need to get, get in touch with and be aware of. In our tier twos, we've talked to the Y M C A. They're very, they're very impressed with this. So we're, Ephraim is already on board, but we're planning a discussion with them on their C E O about, about being a part of this as well. Rotary, let's just break it there. So we presented to them last week. They're very excited about it and we're continuing to work with Rotary right now. And then my next meeting after this one is with the co-leaders leadership today. So we're continuing in our, in our path down the tier one, tier two partners, fellow travelers and partners. Makes sense. All right. So questions? The end of my.
You're reminding me of what you think the usage is going to come seniors versus non-señors. I don't know if we talked about that.
I'm sorry, I missed the.
Of what's the usage going to be for seniors? Have we, she said you've done a lot of looking to have, what will usage is going to do? So
Yeah.
Taking a look at that and it's going to have more things that would interest more people. So just curious what your numbers are on that. And then where do you think, how far out from the greater city of Good Harbor do you think individuals will come into this facility?
Yeah, if you remember the map, we're primarily focused on the rezet codes, the one starting to spit coming south, right in Fox Island. If you remember our, our join our demographic that showed plus sixties, there were eleven thousand, right? And you can start to see that, like I said, I just fed the neighbors a few hours ago, and then I found out, you know, they have nine hundred members in this demographic just by themselves, right? And then we know lots of seniors that come to participate in Joe and I's outreach programs, right, as well. So we think we're going to have a pretty good, a pretty good membership, right? In addition to that, when you looked at the, in that study session, they did an interesting thing. I think we talked about this in our session, but you know, they, they started at fifty-five, plus they came to sixty. And what we discovered in that, in their data, was there's another eleven thousand, you know, people there, right? So the community is roughly, so you like to say forty-one, roughly forty percent of this demographic from, from young retired to, you know, pull, to the, you know, the pull of elder, elder, right? There's about twenty-two thousand people that really need a service, right?
Councilor Henderson.
Excellent presentation. Thanks again. I guess to get to the bottom line, what would be your ask of the city council?
Well, I'm trying to lease the building. So the faster I can get to that number is, is primary. And unfortunately, I wanted to have more puzzle pieces I wanted for you guys, but I just didn't have enough bandwidth to get through all the clubs and all the, all the different, different associations yet.
Do you have any other financial commitments from any of these clubs? There was twenty-one thousand. Is that what I saw?
Yeah, that's, but that was dominated.
Okay. And that is those from the clubs? I mean, I see.
That was two individual, that was two individuals of the Rotary.
Okay.
That donated that all. That donated that on their own. The, the club is still in discussion, right?
Okay.
And, uh, and we're working with that. It's another due diligence path that we're on. Right. We, but we hope that both the major clubs are going to come and be a full-time partner with us.
Okay, thank you. So can you go back to the slide maybe that has the dollar amount that you are asking council for right now? Like, and then we also need to know, council would also need to know, not just what we need right now, but then what are we committing to for seven years? They need to know that total as well.
Um, the seminar was harder, right? Because, but right now, what I need to do is I need that two hundred K so I can get started. Right. Started gives me the keys. It gets engineers, designers, that kind of stuff into the property. We can start doing actual sizing, project sizing. Um, our plan is to close the gap, uh, with our clubs and our other, you know, other grants and what have you to, to get the rest of the program done, right? And we're trying to get all that done this year, right? It's not so much, it's just a lot of busy buying. If you really looked at the list, AV systems and tables and chairs and paint floors and, and he's got, they just really capital construction. There's really only the two, the two drain line for the kitchen and the salon, right? That really are, are something that's, um, that we can't manage. And we're going to try to do a lot to volunteer some too. You know, you don't, the way this is working out for me anyway, because you never know. Um, if we present, an electrician will walk up to me and say, I'll move all those lights away. Just because we know we want to do X, right? I mean, it, it's hard for us to predict because we get so much community support when we present this. Right? That we, we find out, it's just like the, the furniture for the TV room. You know, we had four or five thousand dollars up there a week ago. And now it's down to a thousand. So we can buy the TV and the peoples and solve it, right? And so I never really know what's going to come at us. And like I said, the, the clubs and stuff really haven't, you know, spoken yet. And, and I think one of our peers said it well the other day is we're looking for that spark, that first big puzzle piece to come in. And I think when that happens, everybody else will want it. Right. And we're hoping that the city council will do that.
Yeah, I, I think that I know that we've got the two hundred thousand dollars in our budget to support the senior center. I don't think that necessarily committing that to this would then commit us to longer term. We could always write it up that this is the one kind of event. And then later on, if the council so agreed, we could say we'll apply some additional monies every year. Like we would probably do it in, in Met Parks at a senior center. So I'm not sure whether, I think they're mutually exclusive that if we were to say, well, support this with two hundred, one hundred, whatever. Doesn't necessarily mean, well, we're, we're also signing a contract for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So I think I would feel comfortable doing something like that. Let them work it out. This is what he called the, the big spark, the puzzle piece that gets us the movement. Cause I, I, I would like to see something done soon because I understand that tenement parks on a, a nice path, but that's going to take time. And the seniors are going to lose, uh, insuluth during capability relatively soon, I think. I think perhaps one other area the city might, uh, suggest helping is perhaps in the permitting process too.
Well, I was going to ask, cause none, none of you had, I'm sorry, we don't accept comment from the public, um, during the study sessions. But, um, if we, if, you know, things like the salon and things, those would definitely need to be permitted near the city. And you, you all know that the kitchen and all of that. I don't know what the timeframe is like for that kind of thing. I don't, Paul is not here. Carl may be able to answer some of those questions, but that was what, that was a question that was in my mind was how's, you know, even with expediting this, if we were able to do that, how soon could we come in and inspect and permit and do that to get it up and running? And I don't have an answer to that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hard to say without knowing exactly what's going to have to be done for the tenant improvement. Um, it is in an RV two center. Uh, so would likely based on the uses, I think it fits into, I'm just doing a quick analysis over here. I think it would likely require additional use permit. So that, that adds some time to the, to the process that has to go to the area examiner for, for decision. So I must be finding a different use for it. I mean, it's not a standard use that just fits neatly into any definition clearly. So we have to do a little more analysis on that. I'll certainly do that, but just a quick look at it. That's my initial reaction.
You had also thought about working his property through early December, right? So we've got some time to get it spun up and permitted and whatnots, right?
Yeah. Remember on our agenda, we're trying to reach out and schedule our meeting. You know, there was one thing, uh, you know, cause there was a church in there before us, or that property's already, um, permitted for assembly. Our question back to the city is, if this is a new, this new small, can we assume it's the same assembly as assembly? Whether it was a church or whether it's a senior center.
Those, sorry, those will be conversations to have in a pre-op meeting or, yeah, the, the more detailed information. Yeah. Maybe cut you off, but we, we have about two minutes left. Yeah. And, and I, but I wanted to make sure, I want to make sure that you have all your questions answered. And I know council does as well. But that would definitely be a one-on-one meeting with staff to find out what all of those detailed little two bits are. Um, Councilor Luke?
Thank you. Uh, I'm concerned about yours two, three, four, five and six. Where does the money come from? And how much do you need?
We're gonna, we're gonna do as much leasing as we can.
And what happens if you don't have, if you don't have the funds to pay for the, for the lease? What happens?
We negotiate with the landlord. That's where, that's what all of us do, lease properties. Right? We do everything we can to not bail at the lease, but I mean, you, it's not, it's a non, it's not zero risk. Right? But no, it's any business that rents space and goes forward. Right? We just have to be diligent, yeah, work at it.
One, one thing I, I would say just to see, think about, you know, any type of financial commitment ever long-term for it. It's just, you know, how you, um, and I'm not sure which is the right lexicon to use for how you folks do your fun, funding and monies here. But a, uh, you know, just the program versus obligated funds. You know, as you look across the next seven years of, for your community center slash senior center slash, you know, performing arts, whatever this, you know, wha- whatever's done in here, you know, what you want to program for that over the years. And our job is to go make sure this place becomes, you know, you know, cost, cost efficient so that, you know, you can spend that money elsewhere to make sure you don't have to obligate it the next year because we already got a model that, uh, you know, pays for itself. That's the emphasis, uh, you know, put in the energy, put in the work to have that within, you know, twelve to twenty-four months, you know, self-sufficient. I think looking around the community and I've been in every senior center, most community centers throughout, you know, here's who does that county. And I am looking at this community and wants to figure out, like, there's any reason I can't have it.
So that two hundred thousand dollars now that the city has in a pocket for a senior center, that's twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
Yes.
So that means no more money in twenty-four as it stands right now. When you go to, you know this, I've done a lot of fundraising like this. You need to have some kind of commitment from this. It would be nice to have a commitment from the city. X amount a year for the next five years. Because nobody wants to be the first person to give you money.
Right.
They want to be the last person.
Yeah.
But if they all see that you've already got a commitment from the city, it's going to make your funding easier.
Yeah.
I'm in favor of, of helping them now. And I'm in favor of looking at our budget going forward of some kind of annual commitment. So it'll make their fundraising easier as you go down the road. I mean, uh, people, um, well, I, I guess I talked enough, but that's what I, you get what I'm talking about. So I'm in favor of doing something, uh, as quickly as we can. You're right. It's not without risk, but.
We were prepared to admit that, right? Admit that risk, right?
Yeah.
Same as you.
Thank you. Um, at our meeting with Ally and Steve Nixon earlier this week, they indicated that there was a potential option they discussed. Uh, the peninsula garden site, they had money kind of set aside in their budget to correct that and maybe a partnership or something like that. I was wondering if you could elaborate your, on that and.
Well, we're still kind of new in it. Uh, several of us walk the property. Um, the question, could it be used, you know, for senior center range? It's difficult to ask. We got questions out to architects. Let's be honest with ourselves. And I don't know if anybody else wants to comment, but this was a greenhouse. It's basically that's, that structure, the bones of that structure are galvanized aluminum poles, forty feet wide by a hundred feet down, right? So little questions like, okay, we've got to raise the roof where we're going to put air conditioners in and this kind of stuff. Well, that frame even support doing that thing. Right? So to answer that question is going to take some time. There's guys like me are not going to answer it. I can, you know, guess. But, um, we really need the architects to decide if what we want to do is even usable for that structure. That's going to take some time.
Thank you. Um, I, I know that we need to wrap up. I was just curious if there's any other information that Gary or Joe could bring back to the council in order to, um, further the conversation for those of you that.
Yeah, I still want to know about money for two, three, four and five and seven.
And then I don't know how fast you and staff can set up a meeting to talk about the, the permitting issues. You know, if it does require conditional use permit or what the salon would require, the kitchen, you know, things like that. If that would be information that council would like to know as well. And then just maybe, uh, yeah, just some, some more concise dollar figures for what, you know, to get to come in.
I'll work directly with you with it. I'll make sure I get it, get it all put together. Yeah, I've heard the performance. I just, I can show you what I assumed and what I'm calculating out.
Uh, Councilor Barrett?
That's what I, I agree with Councilmember Luke. I'd like to have that information too. So I would think that we all would. I think this is a really important project. I think the city really, really needs it. I'd also like to be able to have the opportunity to meet with, uh, finance director about his view of our finances. I know there is discussion about revenues, not necessarily doing work, not doing what you need. So I want to make sure before we make a longer term commitment to that we're doing that, having done our due diligence, knowing that the community really needs this. I like the idea of it. I just think we have to make sure we know what we want.
Councilor Henderson?
Very quick, put your stat of the vital one, please, see.
Still waiting to hear back, right? But we, uh, we have a mitigation that we're partnering with Tacoma.
Okay.
Right. They're an organization that, so the community foundation.
All right.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, if you, if you want to, um, send any information to me, then I'm happy to transmit that to the city council and any additional questions they have. Make sure that we get them back and forth. And I will set up a meeting of finance director, talk about that. And he can come and present that to council at a, a per session soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both so much. I really appreciate this.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you very, very much. Um, okay, we will move on to our second item of discussing, which is the proposed Crescent Creek annexation. Um, this report will come to its form in a couple of weeks, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Afternoon, Council. As you read the study session memo for this item, uh, the city is prepared to annex, uh, some parcels, uh, parcels actually, uh, that are city-owned parcels. Uh, but what we're focusing on today is two city-owned parcels that are part of the city's Crescent Creek park.
Sorry, Jeff, I'm going to pause just a moment. The owl picks up every bit of sound in the room and makes it really, yeah, makes it very hard for people watching online to hear. No problem. Good to see all of you. Thank you. Take care. See you guys soon. Thank you. Yeah, feel free to have all your conversations that you want. Thank you so much. Thanks again, Gary. Thanks, Jeff.
Um, so, yeah, so we're talking about two parcels that are in around Crest Creek Park. Technically, we consider them part of Crest Creek Park. Um, I'm going to bring up the map that was created and provided as part of the study session memo, which should look familiar. I'll zoom in here just a second, but you can see, uh, there's series of, uh, the legend is off the screen right now, but, uh, the white is city parcels and city right of way. The gray is Crescent Creek Park. Uh, and then the hatch black is the two parcels of question that look in the annex. Um, just something I want to point out here, you can see that, uh, the city's right way ends partway through, um, the park and essentially right on the property line of the Sonic Lodge. The Sonic Lodge is personal here is, isn't been known as the roar builder property. Uh, and then Pierce County actually owns, operates, maintains the, and they are the right of way from that point here. Um, we'll bring up a different, uh, map in just a second, but, um, the question is, is should we move forward with annexing just the two parcels or should we move forward with annexing some for all the right of way? Uh, Pierce County has informed our planning staff that, uh, the option to annex, uh, the adjacent right of way is up to the city. The county doesn't have input on that. It's what the city wants and they'll consider whatever the city wants. Um, as noted in the study session memo, staff is considering three options. And with the, uh, right of way, half of the right of way, all of the right of way. Depending on what jurisdiction you're in, um, we might do one of those, two of those or all three of those, depending on the situation. So, um, the benefits to annexing all of the right of way. I outlined those in the memo, but it's, uh, it includes full control and operation of the roadway uh, for future development. And, uh, and it includes the intersection of Crescent Valley Drive and ninety-sixth street. There, the reason that is a benefit, could be a benefit to the city, uh, is that it then would implement city public work standards on those roadways. So if adjacent property owners develop, if it's a right of way that is part of the city right of way, those adjacent property owners would have to build to city frontage improvements. A good example of that is the intersection of thirty-eight and Hunt Street. Uh, on the southwest quadrant of that intersection, brush construction builds thirteen homes or so. And, uh, that property itself is in the county. Uh, and, but the right of way, full, uh, right of way, uh, along Hunt Street and along thirty-eight is city right of way. If we were to have split the right of way and the city were to only operate the part of the right of way that's adjacent to the city parcels, we would not have had this city mandated frontage improvements along that section of road. So there's a benefit right there. And then, uh, the other benefits that we look at is just general roadway operation. City gets to decide how that roadway will operate, not half the roadway and then discussions with Pierce County about, is that going to fit? If they, how they want to operate it or not? Um, also, if we were to, uh, work with the county, I, we don't have any, uh, right of ways that I'm aware of. But I've seen in my time here that, uh, are split half and half. We either own and operate all of the right of way or none of the right of way. In this case, we, uh, when we annexed in, or part of the area around Crescent Creek Park where the volleyball are located, we didn't, as you know, it didn't annex the right of way there. But, so this is one area where we didn't annex any of the right of way, but almost everywhere else in the city. Like everywhere else in the city, I can think of, we have annexed, when we annexed the properties, the parcels, we annexed the adjacent right of way, all of the adjacent right of way. So that just, uh, is for me to say that I don't know what a relationship would work, look like with Pierce County. We work with Pierce County on many levels, uh, great to work with. But I don't know what it would look like to only operate half of a roadway and have to work with them on, well, we want to repave this roadway. We want to rebuild city standards. What are you going to build on your side of the roadway? Well, we're going to leave those chipsy. Okay. Well, that would be awkward, but doable. So, uh, so things to consider, um, the drawbacks to annexing, uh, not annexing all the right of, excuse me, include, uh, liability and maintenance expenditures from roadways. So, so, um, if we, sorry, if we annex all of the right of way, we then take on all of the maintenance requirements, all of the liability associated with that, with that roadway and with that intersection. Um, and I'm going to bring up on, on my, uh, screen here just a second, uh, something that, that we've looked at and considered for a little bit since this question came up. And it has to do, and this is a Google street map stall. Probably looks familiar. This is a view of Crescent Valley Drive heading north at ninety-sixth street. Um, you're probably very well aware of this intersection. Um, this is something where there's some questions on future liability. Uh, this is a non-standard intersection. It's a four-way intersection with a three-way stop. Uh, at your, if you turn this intersection, you know that when you're coming from the city, which is the left and you're going anywhere else along ninety-sixth street, there's no stop on that, but you have free full control of that intersection. You can go straight left or right without stopping. You can go straight left or right without stopping. Um, there are signs and if I zoom up, you'll see very clearly the county sign, yellow sign, there's a stop sign. Traffic, uh, traffic from the left that says does not stop. And so they have put out there what, uh, they feel is adequate control for that intersection. Um, but there still are accidents here. People still don't pay attention, don't realize or just ignore the signs and just assume that it's four-way and stop control. Um, there's also that slip lane that's, uh, on the northwest corner of the intersection. It can be a little confusing. So if I'm in this lane where you see us and I'm turning left, uh, there is a yield sign. It's kind of hard to see if there's a yield sign on that slip lane. But somebody who normally drives that route rarely has to yield. So maybe they don't remember that to you. So anyway, that, that's, that's the liability. Usually there's not that much liability or just standard liability for it, but this for an intersection, but this intersection is unique. It's not standard. So I just, if we were to obtain all of the right of way along the frontages that we're talking about, uh, Crescent Creek Park, we would essentially take over this intersection also. If we were to take over this intersection and we're to take over the right of way, uh, Marcus and I have looked at various costs to maintain and operate, uh, the right of way through here. We would assume though, those costs aside, is that we would assume since it's the city park and the city parcel that we would want to put city standard sidewalks along our frontage. It's not required, but I'm sure the county would allow if we were to voluntarily put sidewalks, curb gutter along our frontage. And so if we left it this right of way as county right of way, we would probably request that anyway. I'm not guaranteeing that, but I'm just assuming that we probably would. So sit, send that aside. It's the sunk cost of sidewalks, curb and gutters there regardless. Now, the cost just to rebuild or repave the roadway, as you know, this is chip seal roadway. It probably doesn't have much for, uh, subgrade underneath it. Uh, we would probably need to rebuild it to our city standard to re, to regrade, remove the roadway and rebuild the roadway. Including just seeing, leaving the intersection as you see it here today, roughly in the four hundred thousand dollar range for the frontage across, uh, all of these properties, um, eight hundred some odd linear feet.
Yes. What would be the timeframe for that? Is, I've driven up there a couple of times. It's not that bad. It's not failing. I mean, we've got streets here in J. Carver that are failing.
Absolutely.
So that's future cost.
Ten, twelve years out. That's not even on the near term. Right now. Yeah. Um, but one thing to consider when we do that, if we were to, you know, the right of way and we were to do, uh, the roadway improvements along the section, um, one thing to consider when we're doing those is to convert this intersection to a roundabout.
Yeah.
Um, I think it, it is one that would definitely benefit from that type of operation. I know that there's opinions on roundabouts, but I think that this one would fit. It's fairly level already. So the cost wouldn't be too great to convert it to a roundabout, especially with the roundabouts that we see. This would be probably a mountable roundabout like you see at Harborview Stinson. Because otherwise you wouldn't want to put a hundred and ten foot diamond around about it here. It'd just be massive and that we own the property and, and the mountable roundabout seems to work pretty well. Uh, Councilmember Mark.
So knowing that we're barking on what we're going to do with the park, right? We just had a great event last night. And potentially seeing more people using the park with some changes to it. Would you recommend that the roundabout and owning this property would be better for us to make it safer for the people who are using it? I'm just thinking future growth. What would be recommended? We're going to have a lot of people having, potentially, I assume, potentially, maybe.
Yes, I, I, I would say that intersection improvements, because you're going to start to feel, the more we develop this park, the more users we're going to have. And for people that hopefully will be walking here, maybe they'll be walking along Crescent Valley Drive down ninety six. There'll be more people crossing through this intersection of pedestrians or bicyclists. And I would, my opinion is that, that the intersection would operate better for bicycle pedestrians also as a roundabout compared to this type of intersection.
Is there a cost to annex?
I think so. I think, yeah, I think it's just, it's whatever opinion or whatever option the city wants to do is, yeah, they don't, they don't charge us by square foot or annexations. Yeah, it's just the process going through whether it's one square foot or.
That, that looks like a rural road, but anytime there's an accident on sixteen. I live right there. My house is on this map. I had to wait about four minutes, five minutes to get out on the, from Randall when they had that accident. So it does get real busy. So roundabout, assuming the later. And it's one of the only east west routes there is.
There's, there's a lot of traffic on this road. Yeah, but, uh, but the, uh, the, the potential development of Crescent Creek Park will likely include uh, along Crescent Valley Drive, an entrance and an exit for the district park. Right now, you know, there's very limited parking for volleyball area up there. Um, it was possibly to expand that as part of our master plan. We don't know yet, but I anticipate there will be more parking along this area that is now a county right of way. And so having it in the city would be beneficial, I believe, to, to our park operation itself. Councilmember.
A question on the two parcels. If they're city owned already, why are we annexed?
To make sure that they can, when we do a site plan, we want to have a site plan that includes properties that are all together within our city. So it would be very difficult, if possible, I don't know, to have a site plan where some parcels are in the county and some parcels in the city. You have different development requirements.
So just because the city owns this property does not mean that it's.
Oh, my God. All right. So, I mean, the city owns it, but they're not within the city.
Councilboard.
To me, it makes sense to purchase the two to get the right of ways at the same time. And I think that it also makes sense because of the Crescent Creek master plan. And the traffic mitigation will also, I think, potentially help address some concern from some neighbors in the area who are complaining about people going so fast on those roads as well. So I kind of see all of this as being one big picture that we can, I don't know, potentially tie up in a free boat for some people.
Yes, and, and I mean, once we have, uh, if we were to take on the right of way itself along this section, we can lower the speed limits. We can do traffic calming as people come into the city limits. The city limits, uh, as you can imagine, would now be up on Crescent Valley Drive. So that could be speed reduced way up there instead of right round in front of the Sonic Lodge.
And it's downhill, so. I could just, did you happen to see Chief Q C's reply to the person complaining about that? So not as many speakers to someone like.
Right.
But yes, cool.
But there are a lot of complainers.
I know. Yes. I asked this question this earlier and I got the answer from a very reliable source, but I have to ask you as well. Given what we know about the Sonic Lodge town, uh, and whether we're going to keep it or not. Uh, my question is, is it cheaper to demolish a building when it's in a county? Or is it cheaper, do we have any special standards for which we demolish buildings that the county is maybe less? We won't lean in.
So building code, including demolition buildings is typically safe with minor revisions at local levels.
I told you it's a very reliable source. That's the answer I got.
Uh, so, yeah, so I, I couldn't imagine there'd be very many differences.
Okay.
Between county demolition or city. The council.
Yeah, so I, I join with, I think, some other folks who, uh, in support of purchasing this whole right of way. Um, do we have to buy it?
No, I, I just say acquiring. Acquiring the right of way.
Okay, so, yeah. All of the right of way. And for me, I think it's, uh, safety. I think when you talk about safety, if it's going to be used more than it's safety and it's safer for our community. So I, I just support that.
Okay.
It seems there's consensus among you all. Councilor Lichten, I haven't seen your hand go up, but I want to make sure I didn't miss you. Okay. So thumbs up from Councilor Lichten as well. So.
Programmed the improvements to the road and the instruction of the roundabout is just going to be more than four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, like I said, hopefully with the winter grading, it's not, it's going to be well under the one point seven for the hardness. Since now is a.
And that's also a lot, a long time down the road as well.
It is. Yeah, I would anticipate you'd rebuild the roadway and do the roundabout.
Within, so in the next ten years or so.
Uh, maybe ten years. Depending on how the master plan and the park itself felt.
Okay. We'd drop down, uh, speed limit.
Oh, we could, we could drop down the speed limit soon.
Thank you.
It's already. But we would. Uh, it's, is it twenty five now, huh?
Okay, all the way up to Crescent.
Right, but is it twenty five starting here next to, uh, Mr. Paris's property? Oh, I don't know. Yeah. It's ready to turn on the, yeah.
Not that if anybody's going to go twenty five, but.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate that, that, uh, answers the question. We will proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Council. Also, big thanks to Jennifer for putting together the annexation. Thank you. And for the telling event. I heard it was great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you. You're all amazing ones. Team effort. That's right. Okay, uh, moving on to item three, Murphy's Landing Marina dredging. We have this report also from our cover board director, Jeff Langholm and Marcos Rob. Thank you for coming here.
Um, I'm going to just probably hand this right over to Marcos that gives us a follow-up to, uh, our discussion that we had with council. I'll just go through a summary of the memo that was presented and then address any questions that, that the council has. Uh, this memorandum and presentation follow up on the presentation back in January as mentioned. And at that time, council directed staff to proceed with the process to acquire nationwide permit for the dredging at, uh, Murphy's Landing. And based on that direction, um, we had the understanding that that permit to acquire the nationwide permit would be quicker. And that's why that recommendation was provided. Uh, after that study session, we submitted the required, uh, applications for the nationwide permit. And subsequent to the, those applications, the members of Murphy's Landing expressed that their preferred disposal method for the dredge sediments was to do that in water, in water disposal, which requires an individual permit and cannot be done under the nationwide permit. Um, the local and state permits, uh, have been acquired. And the final permit options related to nationwide versus individual permit through the court are proceeding at this time. And we recommend continuing to pursue the nationwide permit as it is currently moving forward. If you have any questions or comments. Well, I've actually, I was going to ask, and we, we had asked, uh, Murphy's Landing Marina to come and make a brief presentation so that you can understand from their point of view, how many to answer questions or we can let Murphy's Landing come on.
I'd rather hear from them first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, you want to introduce yourself or you want me to introduce you?
Go ahead.
Well, we have Craig Beck, uh, representing representative, uh, also a longtime engineer in the community and, uh, Raymond Rogers, uh, representing representative and, uh, community number bird.
John Cohen. My pleasure. You have the floor.
Thank you. Um, the memo that, uh, is being handed to you was just a supplement to the memo that Marcus prepared. It's, um, it also follows on the January sixth memo that you had. At that time, staff preferred the individual permit rather than the nationwide permit. And there's been a change in, well, there's certainly been a change in direction, but a change in attitude. A little more history. Following the installation, two thousand eleven, the outfall passes very close to our entrance. We've begun to experience sedimentation that has tended to increase the depth of our entrance. This is from, um, mostly due to runoff events out of Dunkin Creek during low tide events. So you can imagine when there is no water there, no saltwater, then we force the bed of the stream coming out of Dunkin Creek to erode. Cause there's no way to swallow the loss of the image's discharge. So as it erodes, the place that it's finding to go is in our entrance. That, uh, decrease in the, um, depth is causing us to watch night tables, particularly during the boat season in the summer, because low tides, lower low tides occur during the daytime and the summer. So our passage in and out of the land is getting more restricted each runoff event that occurs.
And Craig, just, I just wanted to make everybody aware. I showed on the screen now, this is a, uh, city aerial photo, uh, from twenty twenty one in this area. And you can kind of see again that the tidal elevations are so, but it's right about here right now. But you can see the shallow water. You can see what Craig is talking about right here. This is their main channel. Get it in and out. Right here is a wall that was built by Murphy's Land to keep the sediment back. And so you can see that wall has allowed the channel to stay clear for the most part, but at the end of the wall right here, and this is the, uh, essentially a bow leg that comes down and then, uh, discharges around the end of that wall and, uh, the, and discharges into their marina, causing that ablation issue. And then just for reference, also not a little bit actually. This little bit of change in color and texture is where the city's marine outfall was buried under the seabed in two thousand eleven. So just for your reference, uh, where we are.
Thanks, Jim. So, um, under two thousand twenty one agreement, um, the city has undertaken giving a permit to Murphy's Landing to do the dredging and then we are responsible for hiring contractors to actually do the work. Um, that, the design of the dredging was to have been completed under that agreement, January first of two thousand twenty two. And now we're fifty months later, continuing to make applications to the corridor and others in order to get a permit to dredge. Um, we're limited in time. We can dredge to after, uh, July fifteenth each year. And depending on conditions that may or may not be imposed under the Danger Species Act. Um, we can dredge from July fifteen to February fifteen, and that may be reduced as time goes by. So we've we believe that we have missed the two thousand twenty three dredge window at this point, but we don't know. So, uh, those current conditions, uh, are just making it more difficult each month, each day to get in and out of the marina. Um, the further we delay, it is possible that sedimentation will just continue to the expected level. And they get harder all the time. But the city or the members of the marina voted, um, just a few weeks ago, they were asked whether waiting an additional year to get an individual permit was their preference and there was unanimous of those that voted, a large percentage of the ownership voted to wait until two thousand twenty four to get an individual permit. The reason for that is I have been working. The reason for that is, I have been working with three contractors, local contractors in the dredging business. I presented cost budgets to the city back in November for dredging, I've verified those just in the last several weeks, and it's back yesterday. To dredge and do water disposal is about sixty thousand dollars. To dredge and do land disposal is over three hundred and ten thousand dollars. So five times more expensive for us to dredge and take our spoils to a land site. So that was certainly an influence in that voting because we would have to do a special assessment of all the owners in order to return our Marina to what it was when we dredged and drenched.
And we might want to add also that Murphy's Landing has previously dredged. We've always done water disposal of our, of our dredge material. And I don't believe, you mean, because you're our main guy here, that when the permitting started, we didn't understand that the city was going after a land disposal permit. And had we known that in the beginning, you know, we may have been able to take first action at that time because, you know, for us to have had an event happen because of sediment on the outfall pipe and then we're subject to over three hundred thousand dollars in expense, I don't think we feel that that's quite what we bargained for in our agreement with the city when they agreed to do the permit. My house.
You are correct. One question, do the upstream developers that have caused with that construction further up Mont Creek and Donkey Creek, create all that sediment, do they have any kind of liability at all? Because I know that when the storms come, then much as comes down Donkey Creek, and that's the sediment that I think you're putting up dredging, correct?
No.
No?
I can, I agree. I have personal history.
Oh, good.
And development.
Glad to be educated.
The development of North Creek. So as you're going up Burnham Drive, I was the engineer for that. That property has an outfall on it from Highway sixteen that includes the first, the outfall pipe that goes under Highway sixteen terminated on that private property. When I first went out there, that pipe was about ten feet above the bottom of the ravine that had been eroded by that pipe. And right-of-way fence was six feet in the air. Because we, we all have been out there. We had, when we started, the ravine that had been eroded by that culvert was in a configuration that each season that went by, it got deeper and wider and wider and that sediment just kept going down and filling the well under the power plant. So what we ended up doing, I met with the state, met with several agencies in the state, made an agreement that I could fill that ravine with a pipe that replicated the stream that was there, in European.
Stop the erosion.
So I put in a control structure that limits the flow down onto the well and we literally put the pipe in the bottom of that ravine and then filled the ravine, ravine back to what was pre-European conditions.
So is it, we're gonna summarize beyond this, yeah, this is a naturally occurring delta.
Yeah.
Pre-European development, if we existed, seven came down the creek due to upstream erosion. Was, was there exacerbation because the, I mean, the creek is in that basin, but there's many other developments up there. Hasn't been exacerbated by development as a whole since European settlement? Possibly, but it is a delta, it has always been expected, Murphy's Landing has been aware of this, they've continued to dredge it occasionally. Dredge, two thousand twelve was the last time you dredged it?
Yeah. Did the outfall pipe cause any additional?
Well, that's the discussion that took place, and that's where we came to an agreement for the city to pay for the design permitting. And the agreement says, we'll pay the design permitting, as Craig had said, and then they paid the construction, and then from this point forward, because the, the outfall pipe is, is no longer an issue in our opinion, then we're, we're, the city's portion is done at this point, after we finish our port. So just a few things to summarize this and get to why we're here today, is that this, the city staff has been moving forward with the Army Corps permit to complete the nationwide upland disposal. We've been moving forward in that, we know that there are two options, the city, on all of our projects, we do upland disposal. That's just how we move forward. We don't do in-water disposal. And don't need to get into the reasons why, but that's the way we do, so that's the way we progress down this path. And so at this point, we are at a point where we're ready to finalize the nationwide permit. We just had an email from Army Corps yesterday, this morning, this morning, okay, that talked about the last steps necessary to finalize the upland disposal. What we're looking for today is just input from Council, based on the last few items I'm going to talk to you about, about whether we continue on that path of, of the nationwide or do we tell Army Corps tomorrow, no longer interested in upland disposal, we need now to change it to an individual permit. If we're to go down that path and change it from upland disposal to our nationwide permit and instead go down the path of individual permit and in-water disposal, we need to bring our consultant back on board, or our consultant's contract is done, it's paid for, we're, we're, no more money in that contract. But we need to bring the consultant back on board, they gave us a rough estimate back in December to do the work of the additional environmental studies and to reapply for a different permit of sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars, was it? So the burden there, what we're talking about is, is Murphy's Landing expects that burden for the additional consultant work to be done by the city and then staff time to coordinate that. That additional expenditure, we would finalize that, hopefully get it down more than sixty thousand dollars because the original contract to do in-water disposal, or sorry, up-land disposal with parametrics was thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So that was the contract, so now we're looking at a contract that is significantly more to do in-water disposal. And as Craig alluded to, it's gonna take longer to get through, even though we've gone through this process. When the state and local permits are done, state and local permits say either in-water or up-land disposal. So we can change just at the federal level about which direction we go as to in-water or up-land. So that's what we're asking Council today for, is to provide some guidance on if they want us to come back with a consultant services contract to do in-water disposal and permitting instead of up-land disposal. Counsel member will.
Thank you. So it would cost, and it would cost sixty thousand dollars?
That's the rough estimate we received from our consultant, like I said, we haven't, we did not go through and itemize, we did not receive a full scope. It was just a list with a few items and a number. We need to review that, we would hope that we could reduce that down some.
So, so right now, if, if Murphy's Landing pays, they can do an in-water disposal for sixty thousand, they say. And they say it would cost them three hundred and fifteen thousand to do it in water. This is land, oh, it's backwards. Oh, it's a back, oh, it's cost, cost three hundred and fifteen dollars to do a land and, and sixty thousand for water. If, if, is it possible that they could pay for the consultant thing? I mean, that's still half of the land disposal fee.
It is, I think we would really need to renegotiate the agreement cap with Murphy's Landing two thousand twenty-four. So.
And that would give us some relief.
Okay.
What's predominantly driving the high price for land disposal, is it sampling and analysis or transportation?
Transportation and disposal.
But you have to do sampling and analysis for in, in-water disposal as well?
The DMLO said that our sediment is satisfactory to put in commencement bay. So this, the new issues that you have to deal with now are Endangered Species Act. And those, I believe, policies and processes are evolving as we speak.
Yeah, so because of past dredging of the site has not shown that there has been an issue with contamination, US Army Corps indicated that they don't think they'd be requiring any further sampling and think that there's no likely not an issue. But then we did receive, I believe it was an email, correct or wrong, Marcos, an email that they, there was a tribal entity that said that they were looking for material testing. So, for contamination, so that has yet to be determined, if we're going to be, be doing materials testing and then question is, is what if something comes up in the sediment, then what needs to be done at that point? It's a, I could almost guarantee you, if there is contamination, it would not be allowed to do in-water disposal.
Yeah, that could happen at any time.
So further to change the Council, number Luke Scott, it would cost the city sixty thousand dollars to save Murphy's Landing three hundred thousand.
Or, yes, well, they would save the difference between three fifteen and sixty, so.
So the obvious question is, are you willing to negotiate that?
That's a question we have to take to the board and, I mean, to the membership.
Well, I'm not in favor of the city, if you're asking us, spending sixty thousand dollars to save them three hundred, but I am in favor of negotiating to find a, something where we can share their costs.
Counsel member Martin?
So I appreciate where we're going with the comments. Is there, is there anything else that we don't know about, although in water? Is there any other concerns that the city, if we're down, if the cost down a bit right now, with the process of the down? You mentioned that there's additional staff time, that we have, we have some sunk cost already, correct?
We absolutely do, yeah, and some of those are, we can reuse some of that information, we're not starting from scratch, you know, segments.
But we've already paid, we've already paid a fee for, for this other permit, is that correct?
Yes, but we have to do a different permit to do an individual permit. Then there's more specific, there's more entities involved. Through the individual permit as opposed to nationwide, it's more of a scripted permit already in place.
So we, we've spent money already, that's not gonna be, we can use some of that, some of that, so we'll have to factor that into the cost. So it wouldn't only be potentially sixty thousand if this quote is correct. It likely would be some additional money that we would want to prove. If I'm hearing correct, if I'm understanding correctly, that we've already spent, but we're not going to be using that permit. Am I right?
But, yes, if, if, I don't know if I could give you a dollar amount of how much that would approximately be because like I said, we had to go through the permitting process through state and local agencies anyway, and a lot of that documentation was necessary for that process. So it would be, it would be difficult to pull out how much would be lost in the amount that was already some percent into this. Okay.
But, I mean, I really believe that we're, I think, negotiating, I think I have to say, it was less expensive, significant number. And having obviously Murphy's Landing, but I just want to make sure that we're, if there's costs that we've incurred that we aren't going to be able to use or they're not going to be able to use, I think that should add on to the cost that we will get, it's too much negotiations.
Okay, appreciate, appreciate the input because what, what I'm hearing is, and then, I'm trying to, go ahead. What I'm hearing is that, don't come back to City Council with a contract yet. We need to, well, we could go on parallel paths, I guess, put a contract together, scope and B, but also start having discussions with Murphy's Landing Marina about renegotiating the agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But there's going to be an opportunity to find out if we would need to have that testing completed. I would hate for us to spend sixty thousand dollars and then find out that we cannot do it in water.
Yeah.
Yeah, you fall apart in the same comment. They will not issue the term that's one of the answers. Now, we're part of what I'm saying, you can't just go over here all of them.
You do need to wrap up.
Who would set the analyte lists for sampling?
I'm assuming it'd be ecology or Army Corps or ecology.
So Daniel's not able to either of us today, but potentially we would need to go to an executive session to discuss this. So we, Daniel's out for remainder of the week, if we're able to talk to him before Monday, we'll clean data to you about a potential executive session.
All right, thank you, Council, for your direction, and thank you, Jeff, thank you, Marcos, and thank you both for being here, the great thing there. Um, how about a five-minute lead time? If you all are in favor, okay, so we'll adjourn until four thirty-three. Welcome back to the De Harbor City Council Study Session. Thursday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, time is four thirty-four PM. And we will go right into our final discussion item, which is updates to the City Council's guidelines and procedures. And this report will come from our city clerk, Josh Stecker, who is joining us online. Hi, Josh.
Hello, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we are here to review a few suggested changes to Council's guidelines and procedures, and I'll just start right into it. Starting on page five of Council's guidelines, we have a new section that we've added called adherence to guidelines. This section we created based on Council's feedback and comments at the March eleventh retreat. The model that we have here for the adherence to guidelines is based on a few of the different cities that we looked at at the retreat and the process they have for holding council members accountable to adhering to the guidelines. So I don't know that there's too much in this section that won't be familiar to you from that discussion, so I'm presenting it to you for your comments. If you want to see it changed or modified at all, we can discuss that here and then bring it back to you for adoption.
Any Council comments or questions on this section for Josh? I thought it was very well done. I don't see any, there's no hands raised for questions.
Okay, well, Council likes this, the way this is drafted, we'll bring it back for adoption by resolution with the other changes, probably at the first meeting in May, so we'll move along to the next section. The next section that we're going to look at is in the process of running council meetings. This is not something we've discussed much with Council, but it's about how we conduct public comment. And this, this issue first came up in staff discussion with city attorney where we were talking about when and how Council receives comment on things that are on the consent agenda. And it was kind of pointed out that, under our current structure, public comment happens after the consent agenda. So if someone from the public wanted to make comment on a consent agenda item, they wouldn't have that opportunity to do it until Council already taken its action. So the idea was presented of moving the public comment section up to, before the consent agenda. We've had conversations and heard from council members in the past about the idea of having a dedicated public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. One of the advantages to doing that, and it's something that other cities do, is it gives people the opportunity to come and say what they want to say and then not have to wait through the bulk of the meeting until their specific agenda item comes. So under this proposal, we would have a public comment period, which would be open to any comments on non-agenda items or items on the agenda. It would still, everyone would still have their three minutes per subject, per agenda item, whichever they wanted to comment on. But it would give them the opportunity to do it upfront. One of the, I guess, one of the advantages slash disadvantages, the disadvantage would be that the public would not have the benefit of hearing the staff report before they make their comments. But on the flip side of that, it would also give staff the ability to listen to public comment and then modify their staff report to address concerns when we get to the, to the business item section, where staff would be giving the report. So that was one of the, kind of the pros and cons sides that we would need to weigh in making a decision like this. The other kind of a plus for doing it this way is it would save a little bit of time during the meeting where we have to, you know, open public comment for each agenda item, wait for people online to see if anyone's going to raise their hand, just save a little bit of procedural time that way, but this is kind of a new thing that we haven't discussed before in our studies. This is kind of a new thing that we haven't discussed before in our study session. So I just put this in here to see if councillor would like to try this or if there are any comments or thoughts about this from council. Um, to see what direction you'd want to go with that.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thanks, Josh, I actually like this idea. Is there any interest in perhaps extending the three minutes to four minutes or five? That's the first stage in time, no? Okay.
Councilmember Martin. Well, I, I understood, Josh, you just say that if I want to make a public comment on. Item A, I would have three minutes. If I also want to make a comment on item C, I would have an additional three minutes. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, I think that will be the way that we would address that in here. And I'm not sure when I wrote this, if I clearly put that in here or not, but I think that would be the way that we would want that.
Man, that may be framing that a little bit more just to have it be more of a feel on that, you know?
Yeah, I can make, I can make a clarification of that part and get that in the final version.
Great, councilmember, what?
So if I understand. Citizens would not have an ability to hear the staff report. And then make comments, they have to make a comment before they hear the staff report, is that right?
Yes, under, under this, uh, proposal, that would be how it works. Um, they would, of course, have the agenda bill with the staff report in it to review ahead of time. But, um, if staff was going to expand on the agenda bill and provide any additional information. Um, they wouldn't be able to hear that before they made their comments.
And so the other option is taking all of the comment at one time in the beginning would be to take consent agenda comments and general comments not on the agenda ahead of the consent agenda. And then take comments on items on the agenda in the same way that we do it now. Um, the, the intent either of those would be be able to, we would be able to hear from the public prior to council passing the consent agenda.
I, I like that idea, yeah, I like that a lot.
Councilmember Lichten.
Yes. Thank you, um. I, I like the idea of having it at the beginning, just from someone who's given comment. At a meeting before, it's just nice. To not have to wait through and figure out where you're having to go. I think it's very user friendly for the public, so, and I've seen the other, um. Uh, cities do this and be really successful and they have kind of a, you know, council knows this is just a time to listen. Um, I just, I like that idea. As far as the semantics of how, you know, depending on which item and things like that. Um, you know, I trust that that can get worked out, but I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, councilmember remember.
I, I think it's a good idea, especially for the consent agenda and the items not on the agenda to, to lump those together at the beginning. I am a little concerned isn't the right word, but I would really. Like to be able to see the public. And, and we can't force this, but I would like them to be able to hear all the comments that come. From the council, from the staff, as well as from the public in conjunction with the agenda item. That does mean that they have to stay for the whole meeting. But that also means that they're more engaged community members too. So I don't know if there's a way we can maybe try the consent part out first and see how that goes. And maybe we, I don't know, maybe we do a flash vote or something, and, and say, what do you, you know, what do you think of this? Would you be more likely to give public comment if you didn't have to stay the whole meeting?
Well, one of the benefits of what you're talking about is, especially in the new business and old business items is, um. Part of the civic discourse is hearing from the staff members.
Yeah.
And the council's discussion, and so part of having the comment on those items afterwards would be the kind of education and collaboration that. Happens, um. So.
That's what we miss if we move it all to the very beginning of the meeting. Yeah, we miss that collaboration.
Councilmember.
I forgot what I was going to say, but unlike your. Your stuff, what you said.
And we can always, if, if council decides to go that, this route with the consent and general comment ahead of time. And we decide that we want to try this way. We can try it. Um. But we can always see how this one goes and the feedback we get from the residents.
I remember what I was going to say. These guidelines are our guidelines. For our meeting, council is our meeting. So we're the ones that determine what it is. Flash vote is nice, but it's also incumbent upon us to make sure that the meetings are run expeditiously. Uh. So I think the idea of having it the way we do it makes a quicker meeting. And flash vote. There'd be too many options to extend the meeting, so.
So, so you all seem to like having the public comment on. Uh, non-agenda items and consent agenda items ahead of the consent agenda. And then having individual public comment for each agenda item.
Yes.
Now we just extend things, right?
Um, not really, I mean, unless people, if the same public comment period, we're just moving it up a few notches in the agenda. Um, the only length that it would, the only extension would be if people had comment on consent agenda items. Which not a lot of people do. I don't anticipate there being like a extra twenty-five minutes of comment on, on consent agenda items. Um, but that would be the only. Lengthening of the meeting would be, we're giving them now a chance to comment for three minutes on consent agenda items as well as non-agenda items.
Which is currently something that's not afforded to the public.
Right, and we, I've had a lot of emails personally of, about that, and so that's why. We wanted to bring this up because people are asking, you know. We really feel like we should be able to comment on consent agenda items, even though they're not going to be necessarily discussed by council unless someone pulls something off. But, you know, based on public, the other length, the name of a meeting could be if there is a lot of public comment on a consent agenda item. And maybe we need to pull this off and chat about it more. But I don't anticipate that happening very much either, so it's really a kind of a win-win to put the public comment at the top. For consent and non-agenda items, so you hear if there are people that would like to comment on that. And then that just concludes the public, the open public comment for the whole meeting. And then we would keep that individual public commenting on agenda items, if that's what you want to try first.
Yeah, so we, do we have to change this in order to try it or can we just try it without? Changing it or what do we do?
Um, Josh, that's the Josh question.
I, I would recommend changing the guidelines so that it's in, in writing, whichever way you want to go.
Okay. Okay. So it seems like there's consensus to add public comment on consent and non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and then we'll keep the public comment periods for now during, for the council, um, each agenda item separately. And then we'll see how that goes.
So just clarifying the language.
And we'll clarify.
Three minutes per.
Yes, we'll clarify the language, um, in that public commenting period for consent and non-agenda items, that they have three minutes per item. So if they have comments on every item on the agenda, they would have three minutes for each agenda item. On the consent agenda. There's the other lengthening of the heart that. That could exist with, with that, but.
Well, you know, when you approve temporary bathroom facilities, that could get pretty interesting.
Okay, well, I think, so you have clear direction then, Josh, from current council?
We've got direction on that part, we, we will move that comment period before the consent agenda. Uh, there are a few other changes in there related to that that we're just going to skip over because they become moot at this point, so. Um, moving on, there's just another procedural thing that we wanted to propose, um, related to old business and new business items. Um, what happens occasionally when we're creating the agenda is we have old business items that are kind of mandated to go before new business items. But there are a lot of times when it makes more sense to do a new business item before an old business item. Um, sometimes we have new business items where we need to bring a consultant onboard to meet with council and kind of makes sense to save their time and cost by having them. Um, present before the old business item. There's some times when we have new business items where we have staff that are on overtime that we would like to have them present first. Um, and some new business items where we know we have a lot of people waiting to make public comment. And if we can move those to the front, then people don't have to wait around as long. Um, so this change is proposing doing away with an old business section and a new business section and just simply having one section for business items. Um, allowing us to just lump them together, um, and in one business item category. Uh, we will still make, uh, the designation like for an ordinance that it's the second reading and adoption of an ordinance. So it'll be clear to people that when we're doing an item that would normally be under old business, that this is the, the old business reading of the item. So that should still be clear to people if, if that's something they were looking for. Um, but again, this is per council discussion to see if you have any ideas about whether or not that would make sense for you to try.
Seeing a lot of nodding heads.
Yeah.
But anyone have any vocal comments that they want to make? No, okay, I think, I think they like.
All right. Uh, moving along, that, uh, summarizes the changes to the agenda that we were, that we were looking at. Um, we don't have any changes in section in article five, which is our advisory boards. Um, but I did get, uh, a few questions and comments from council about the section about, um. Membership and residency requirements. Um, last April, we added the clause in here that says unless otherwise, uh, specifically provided in the municipal code or by state law. Um, every person that we appoint to an advisory board needs to be a resident of the Greater Gig Harbor area, which is defined as being. Within a resident of Pierce County between either the Purdy, between the Purdy Bridge and the Tacoma Narrows Bridge. This, because this was only put in a year ago, we know we've got people on our boards, um, the Arts Commission, the Design Review Board, the Building Code Advisory Board, LTAC. Um, there are a few members out there that I don't believe meet this residency requirement. When we adopted this, we didn't really discuss how we were going to implement it or what council's direction would be, whether we would. Allow people to continue serving and then just not reappoint them, or if we wanted to have them removed and replaced with people who meet the qualifications. Um. It's been about a year now since we made this change. We've gone through reappointment cycles on several of these boards, and it does kind of raise the issue each time when we have people that are applying to be on a board that. Meet these qualifications, but we can't really appoint them because there's already someone on the board that doesn't meet the qualification. Um, so that kind of gives, is a gray area that staff doesn't really know how to deal with. Um, so we want to kind of put this to council, it's been brought up by a few council members and see what your direction is. Um, should we continue to allow people that don't meet this requirement to serve on the boards? Or should we, um, look to get people on the boards that actually meet the requirement? So, um, just wanted to get that out for council's direction and discussion and see what, which direction you would like us to go with that.
And councilmember, do we know how many people are on board that don't meet this? And do we have any idea of when their terms are up?
Uh, it varies, the term limits vary. I know like when we made this change in April, we had just appointed a few people in month before in March that didn't meet this requirement. Um, the four boards that I know of are the Arts Commission, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Design Review Board, and the, um, Building Code Advisory Board. We haven't done like a full audit and looked into every single board member, so there may be more than that. But I, uh, those four, I do believe have, have members that don't meet this requirement.
I, I sort of, I'm, I'm sort of interested in letting people serve out their term. And, uh, and. And, and the new people would have to, like, we'd have to go with this, this is a requirement. But those folks who've been volunteers, let them serve out their term. That's, that's my thought on it.
Councilmember remember?
Yeah, I, I don't know how many people we're talking about, but it seems to me if we have people that hit the criteria. And it is in our municipal code. Then people that are applying for these boards, they ought to get a chance to do it because they're following the code. I think, uh, a person, uh, that isn't, doesn't meet the code should not be on the commissioner committee. I didn't know how many you said there were, but it just makes sense that we have this criteria, but we don't follow it.
Uh, councilmember.
I tend to agree with councilmember, councilmember Roanoke. I feel like if, if a council member moves out of the city, they immediately are no longer. Able to serve on the council, and so seems almost like we have a double standard where. If an advisory board member moves out of the city, they're allowed to continue as long as. They're appointed, so I'm wondering. If that is a double standard, or maybe it's not, but I think it's something that we need to consider. I would like to do an audit and see how many people we have and how that would also affect the workloads of, and the. Workloads of city staff to find new people and also the numbers of members on those commissions.
Thank you, councilmember. And I agree, if somebody moves out, totally. But if somebody was already out under the old rule and then they were brought on board. And, and, and I don't, for me, I think they should be allowed to serve their term because they came on under the rules. And we changed the rules, they didn't move out. If someone didn't, then it should happen, but, but if they didn't move out. Then, uh, then I think, and they came in under the old rules and we changed the rules, I think they should be allowed to serve. But I'm in totally favor of the audit, so.
Yeah, it's pretty, I can figure out what impact it would have.
Yeah, so.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the audit as well. Uh, isn't there some committees that we say they have even within city limits? They're leased to it, and you only refer to the code, you don't say what it is in the guidelines. That would be nice if we didn't have to then go search the code to find out what. What we, what the criteria is. But I think that, uh, surely they should be, uh. I, I think it was always within the city limits, then we moved it to the UGA, and now we're saying Pierce County.
What's that?
Does it like tend on the, the commission?
Yeah, yeah, the, the rules are different for each commission.
Yeah.
Um. But, but certainly within Pierce County, I wouldn't think we'd have anyone on a board and commission that doesn't live in Pierce County.
And you made it clear from the bridge to the Purdy thing.
Yeah, Narrows Bridge, or to the, I'm sorry.
If someone's out of the county, I don't.
Right.
Right, yeah, right.
Uh, the, um, the two comments that I've had from citizens were the, we've done a lot of outreach to get more people to apply for our boards and commissions. And so a lot more city residents are applying for these. And I don't know if this is the comments that Josh received from council or not, that that is a consideration that for some boards where we are getting quite a few applicants now. That are in, internal to the city limits, and so that's just again, up for council's consideration in the guidelines.
If I remember the code, it said, uh, we would accept them in the UGA, but give preference to people within the city limits. Isn't that, I mean, I, it used to be, right?
It used to be, I think so, I don't know, Josh.
Each board, each board is a little bit different. Um, so some, a couple of our boards, the Southern Commission, um, and the Civil Service Commission, those ones are required city limits. Uh, the Parks Commission, Planning Commission, council has gone back and forth a few times on what the residency should be on those. And the, the code for both of those is, um, city limits or the UGA with some limitation on how many UGA members we can have. The other boards, I think, are all open to, to Pierce County.
But without an audit, Josh, do you know if anybody that's not even in Pierce County, that's on any of those commissions?
Uh, that, that would be the, the ones that I alluded to, there's one on Arts Commission, one on LTAC, and I believe there are. Two on the Building Code Advisory Board and maybe one on DRB, those two boards I'm not familiar with as much. But they, yeah, they do not live in, in Pierce County at all.
Okay, councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you, um. So would it be possible to just do in the future, no rush? Um, kind of an overview of what our current standards are for all of council. Um, even through an email of here's the requirements. And maybe a staff memo talking about, would it make it easier to have it all the same? Would it make it easier, you know, why do we limit to certain things? Just kind of do an overall review of those, because when I looked them up, they were all very different. Um, and I could see how that would be confusing potentially, um. To residents, I, I mean, maybe not, I'm just throwing this out there, but I'd be curious if other people would be interested in that as well.
Yeah, let's look at that whole thing.
But there were reasons for some of that, uh, councilwoman.
Sure, sure, sure.
Some had a particular skill or degree, uh, could not. It was hard finding somebody that wanted to be on Design Review Board that didn't have a degree or didn't, wasn't an architect. So that's why we widened the area, but some of the other things, the people, there's a lot of people within the limits, city limits. That would like to have these positions.
We could also. Um, we could provide a link to the council meeting where this was discussed because it was very lengthy. And, um, really thought out in terms of each commission and why, why some were just city limits, why some were UGA. And why some were changed, um, from what they were before. So if you all would be interested in listening to that, or I, I don't know if it's a video or an audio, probably audio, because that was. I don't know, two or three years ago.
Yeah, might have been at the council meeting too, because I think the boards and commissions were charged with looking at all the. All the different volunteer commissions and, and, and coming back to council meeting, I think.
It wasn't a council meeting, I just can't remember. It was so long ago. Yeah, yeah, I think the, that we could definitely make a summary.
So I can provide the summary of that, and, and we've had this conversation at least three times in the five years I've been here, and the code's been changed each time. To revise the requirements, but I will say that if you want to have a requirement that's the same across all boards for residency. The only way you can do that is to have it be city residents only, because we have at least two boards that are, state law requires. City residents only on these boards. Um, so that's why they're all a little bit different, because we can't have them be uniform unless we want to cut off everyone that doesn't, isn't a city resident.
Yeah, so we can, Josh, do you think we could put together a memo that does the audit and then has a. Just a brief maybe table that describes the board and the residency requirements and a little blurb on why. And then we can bring that back for a quick discussion at an upcoming work session.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, great.
We have, we have one more, one more quick one, I hope. Uh, this, so this last one was a kind of a last minute addition, um, at the end of last week. Actually, I think it was early this week, um, but we've proposed a new Article Nine for council guidelines. And this is here because, um, the city's purchasing policy and the, the city's authority that's been delegated to them by council. On what we can purchase and contract for, um, that's established by Resolution Ten Sixty-Six, which was adopted, uh, I think eight years ago. Um, it's gotten a little bit out of date, it's a little bit, um, it's not quite as, uh, flexible as we need it to be right now. So, um, Katrina has tasked Dave and the finance team to work on, um, updating that, updating our purchasing policies. Getting that to something that's more usable, and I know, uh, Public Works Director Jeff Langham's working with them on that too. Um, but in the meantime, while we're working on updating that, one of the things that we need to do, um, because of our new budget format. Is look, relook at the delegation of authority to the mayor on what we can purchase without coming back to council. So Resolution Ten Sixty-Six allows us to, uh, enter into agreements up to thirty-five thousand dollars in value, as long as they're, uh, explicitly identified in the current budget. Um, with the new budget, we've stopped identifying, uh, every expenditure in quite as much detail as we were doing before. Uh, the last budget was two hundred and forty pages, and we've trimmed this, this current one down to a hundred and forty. Um, which meant that we took quite a few things out of there that are kind of routine things that don't need to be on everybody's radar. Um, so to kind of meet the letter of the law with that, we need to change our delegation of authority so that we can. Um, so we can enter into contracts and purchase things that don't necessarily meet the level of showing up in the budget. Um, some examples of things like that are, uh, like the desk phones that Keith had to order, uh, a few weeks ago. That, that would normally be something that's part of our operational expenses that we could just do, but because it wasn't specifically in the budget, we needed to come to council for approval. Um, this change will cover things like, uh, the agreements for animal services at the animal hospitals. Those are pretty minor contracts that we have. Um, but because they aren't specified in the budget, we need to come to council for approval with that. Um, so what this proposal, what this, uh, new article does essentially is it ups that amount to a hundred thousand. That's when, within the mayor's threshold to contract for. Um, and it needs to be something that is specific in the budget, or if it's not specifically stated in the budget as a, as an actual objective. Um, it, it needs to be, first, the city administrator needs to determine that it's an expenditure that falls within the normal functions of the city. And it's implied or anticipated in the budget, and then second, the finance director has to affirm that. This expenditure isn't going to result in a budget amendment that we have to make in the future. Um, so as long as those two conditions are met, then the mayor has the authority to sign that. Um, this also allows the mayor to sign agreements, uh, typically inter-local agreements that don't cost the city any money. Uh, we've had a few, these usually come from the police department where we're cooperating with Gig Harbor Fire for first aid training, or we're, um. Working with, uh, Kitsap for jail services or something like that, where it's not a ton of money being exchanged. Or, you know, it's a exchange of services that, that we can just approve without needing to, to come to council for that. Um, the rea- the reason why this is helpful for staff is that it's a lot more efficient for us to just be able to do the things that we know that we need to do. Um, we don't have to spend time coming to council, we don't have to wait for a council meeting to get it for you, um, on a consent agenda typically. Um, so this is, this statement is meant to be kind of a Band-Aid until we can get a new version of Resolution Ten Sixty-Six on the books. Um, just giving us the, the ability to, to do some of these things, so. Um, again, this is another new one that we haven't really discussed much in our past study sessions, so, um, happy to answer questions or have council discussion on it.
And Josh, there's one other update on here that I know we had talked about, but they may consider asking or having council add to here. We realized that this is, um, a little bit of a change, and thirty-five thousand to a hundred thousand is, um, a lot of that's due to cost escalation. Thirty-five thousand dollars, however many years ago that this was put in, there was a lot different than thirty-five thousand dollars today. Um, but with that, we understand that council does have budget authority in your roles and responsibilities. And so we're willing to have that accountability for you in terms of any contracts that we would sign. That would be above the thirty-five thousand, up to the hundred thousand, that you would include that in the weekly update. Uh, to council so that you're aware of those contracts that we're entering into, and also that we would create, um, and keep a log of those in case. In case you wanted to take a look at those, so we could consider adding that language in here, but we do know that this. Um, we want to offer that accountability for people.
Uh, can you remember?
Yeah, I think, uh, that's a good idea, because, uh, you know, the citizenry is continuing to look at us. Be physically responsible every time we turn around, so some accountability to that. And I don't know how often that might happen, but to, again. I don't want to use the word appease, but maybe to make citizenry feel better. Maybe we could put a limit on that, saying, uh, that can happen. You come up with a number three times a year or something, up to a hundred thousand, though. I just think that. For appearances sake, it's going to look like, uh, we're giving the mayor unlimited purchasing power.
Um, if, if I may, I, I.
Sure, I, I'm just throwing that out.
I, I think the hundred thousand is, uh, I, I personally believe it's a reasonable dollar amount, especially with cost escalation. Um, I know that one of the other goals that the council wants us to do is be efficient and, and going to physically responsible. It takes a lot for staff to package things up and get that ready to come to council, so I think we can be a lot more nimble. But in terms of the, um, accountability for residents, that is important. And so perhaps when we sign one of those, I mentioned it in city administrator report at the council meeting, that we passed. This, and it was an, it's an operating cost, so that's on the record and helps those as well.
I'm good with that.
And these, uh, these are contracts that I'm going to get from Public Works, and I'm, I'm not like, just buying it.
Respect, Mayor, we know that.
I, I know.
But there are people out there, they're going to be.
Yeah, there, the perception is a little.
But I agree.
Yeah, but I like, I like having that suggested of having that be in the city administrator's report. I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
I'm very supportive of this and the accountability as well. Would it also be appropriate to have this show up in the quarterly budget report?
The amounts are going to be there.
The, uh, let me talk to the finance director about that, that may be something that we can include.
Will the amounts be there? I mean, I guess, I mean, he was.
Well, she signs a contract, it'll be in their financial.
So, so a, a lot of the other pages were, you have things that, uh, or line items are in there for. You know, Jeff or Carl are going to buy you a car, right?
Right.
That, you know, that would be in there, but also there are separate funds within each of the departments for supplies, operating costs. Um, communication, travel, training, things like that, and so those funds already exist that you have budgeted for. And so that's where these funds would be coming from. They wouldn't be new funds, uh, that you have not already approved to be spent.
Oh, I thought it said somewhere it was, um, some of this could be unbudgeted fund.
If unbudgeted in terms of we didn't line item it for you, but it's, it's items that we have anticipated needing operationally.
In the budget that I'm called up.
Yes, so it will show up in the quarterly budget.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll show the, the funds that you have expended, or expended will be in there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, if it's new funds that aren't in the budget at all, those of course would come to council no matter the amount, right? So, yes.
I think this would help Jeff and Carl, because a lot of your consultant contracts tend to be, not only, but tend to be under a hundred thousand dollars.
It would be huge.
A lot quicker than having to wait two weeks and then prepare everything. So I, I also. Just smiling, so that's.
I said it, we'd miss him at meetings.
Yes, thank you. Um, I too am supportive. I'm just curious, is this pretty standard in other cities? I mean, is this kind of best practice, um, you know, to have this up to a hundred thousand? I'm seeing Katrina shake her head, just confirmation.
Uh, I've researched this a little bit, and, and the range is usually between twenty-five thousand to two hundred thousand, depending on how old the, how old the delegation is. And, and how big the city is. Um, the, the thing to remember is that we don't technically have the authority to purchase or contract for anything unless council delegates it to us. So if, unless even a box of pencils, we don't have the ability to buy that unless council has said, you know, this is budgeted and we authorize you to do that. So this is really just kind of formalizing that to this level and, and, you know, expanding that to, to be the hundred thousand threshold. So every city has to have something like this in place.
Person is important to us, because, you know, as Councilmember Roan so aptly pointed out, we, we know that our different roles. In our government are important, and we have checks and balances for a reason, and so the accountability portion of this. Um, is important to, and we can commit to reporting it not only in the weekly update, keeping an Excel spreadsheet for full. Um, disclosure, and then also talking about it in the city administrator's report.
Since we're talking about the delegation of authority, for me to be able to sign a contract, would it be. Appropriate to put in there as well, what you're delegating for to do direct buy? And that puts a little bit of context to me, so you can sign a contract up to a hundred thousand, you're already working with that, you've gone out. You know, you've got a standard contract with people, now you're just purchasing off that contract. But it also then puts in there about what your direct buy is, if we're talking delegation, I think that's important.
Oh, you mean what my personal purchasing authority is?
You can, you can direct buy up to thirty, thirty thousand, just throwing out the number, a, a number. Then I think that should be in there as well, and it just gives us context, so.
Sure.
Up to a hundred thousand, you can sign off, you don't need it in the US because we're delegating that to you. But it's also, we should have form lines, if not already in there, where you're able to do a draft first.
Do you want that for city administrator as well? Is that possible, Josh, to add that language in there?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, that's a great point.
Do you need to re- review what those are, to either increase them or keep them the same, or?
I think they can stay the same, yeah, and I think, I don't, uh, yeah, I think they can stay.
We don't want to have, we don't want to increase that too much.
No.
So. Well, and it goes to, it goes to, you know, true transparency and trusting government, and so we can keep those low. And if we need anything like that, we'll come to council.
Yeah, if there's something really awesome that comes up where I'm like, I, I need seventy thousand dollars, council, and here's why I want to spend it, and this is great. I would have to, I would have to come to you for that and bring that as a new agenda item, and it would be a budget amendment and. Because it would be outside of my personal purchasing authority.
Do, how do vehicles fall in that?
They're, but, but vehicles are budgeted.
If they're unbudgeted though, then we.
Anything unbudgeted, we have to come to council for, yeah. Okay, I think so adding the language about myself and city administrators, um, personal spending budget. And then the, um. Accountability portion of city administrator will report on contracts that have been signed. That we're not on a, that we're not on a council agenda.
What your direct buy.
Yes, what our direct buy limits are, um.
We have limits also for Jeff on contracts or Carl on contract changes, and that varies by contract, or is that standard?
Well, for, yeah, so for contracts from Public Works, each time we come to council, if it's a consultant source contract, that is contained within. Uh, management reserve.
Right, yeah.
And for public court contracts, it is a contract change order authority.
Right.
For non-Public Works contracting, it is clear as mud, and so we typically try to rely on MRSC. That's part of the work that Josh alluded to, that I've asked the task of finance director in his aim to look at the policies to be consistent with state law. On director's authority, just to make sure that we're, um, focused at the law.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think we have consensus on that. Thank you, council, this will make staffs like so much easier. That was, that, that was the last one, correct, Josh?
Yes, yeah, I'm done, I'm done with you.
Thank you very much, um, for all your hard work on this, um, Steve, Burke, Sicker, and, uh, the rest of staff that are working on this as well. Nina and Dave, Jeff, I know you're going to be excited to get Public Works contracting wrapped up in a nice, neat little, little package. So, um, if there's nothing else, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd say we adjourn.
All right, meaning adjourn.